All eyes are seeing the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, thank you everyone for coming. These silence was cell phones. Meeting details have been placed on the agenda to allow council members, staff, and the public to participate. Governors, executive order in 2020, there will be limited access to the council chambers at this time. Masks and physical distancing is encouraged. Members of the audience can also tie in remotely via teleconference. If you're on via teleconference during this call, press star nine to raise your hand to ask the speaker in this meeting. Speakers will be asked to identify themselves. Speakers, member of the, a member of the public have the right to address the city council in order to speak their opinion regarding the issues within the jurisdiction of the city council at all regular and special council meetings. Please speak from the podium. When addressing the council, please state your name for the record prior to providing the comments. Please address the council as a whole. Public comments, this is time for public comments. Council may ask questions, but may take no action during public comment section of this meeting except to direct staff to prepare a report and place on the future agenda. If you're here to make up comments on a specific agenda item, you may speak at that time. If not, this is a time, please limit your remarks to five minutes. And I'm going to start off actually public comments. And I just want to introduce Randy Johnson as our new interim city manager. Welcome. I just wanna thank him for being a part of our team and our, uh, our moving forward as a city. And his first week, I'm sure, um, Chief or probably Phillips are going to detail on that later on. Chief Gilman will say some comments I'm sure on those. But Randy had a heck of a first week on this last week.
Why else?
As an introduction, I'm sure he was doubting whether or not he wanted to be a part of our team. So I just wanna thank you for moving forward and staying, staying on board with us. It was a, a challenging week, I'm sure.
It was a challenge for Wairika. Interesting.
Interesting, interesting to say the least, yes, absolutely. And thank you again. Guys, is there any public comments? This time? Alright, go on to, yeah. Discussion possible action, consent calendar. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered routine and will be enacted in one motion unless a member of the council. And I forgot to do my thought. Yeah.
Bet he told that, did he?
Wow. Unless the number count wishes to remove an item for discussion or a member of the audience wishes to comment on an item. The city manager recommends approval of the following consent calendar items. A, approval, ratification of payments issued from June 28th, 2021 through July 11th, 2021. B, approval of minutes of emergency meeting held June 29th, 2021. C, approval of minutes of regular meeting held July 6th, 2021. And D, continuing continuation of emergency ordinance number 855. E, waive all text reading of all ordinance on the agenda. Ordinance shall be introduced and adopted by title. What is the wishes of the council? Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to take off the minutes of the emergency meeting. Item B, please take that out for discussion.
Offer discussion, so one, B.
B is in void, right?
Okay. Anything else? Nothing else?
Then I would make a motion that we approve items A, C, D, and E. As presented.
Councilmember Barrett, I'll second.
Oh, councilmember Freeman made the motion, sorry about that. I don't know if anybody's. Oh, there's Don, hi, Don.
So you got three people on right now?
We have a motion second to approve number 1A, C, D, and E. I'll do a roll call, we're gonna change things up a little bit. Joan?
Um, I vote aye.
Paul McCoy?
Aye.
Corey Milton?
Aye.
Debbie Barrett?
Aye.
Duane K, aye. So now we are off to one B.
Yes, item number one B. So the minutes, it was an emergency meeting that was held regarding fireworks. And so there was, I wasn't here because I was, uh, I'm, I was on my way, I was on vacation, on my way to visit my brother-in-law and sister-in-law. And I tried calling in several times, but I couldn't make it. I talked to Arthur about a half a second before I think I was disconnected. But anyway, I see that I was referred to a couple of times in here. And so I would like to discuss that. So first of all, um, councilmember McCoy requested that he ask for me to be recused due to a perceived conflict of, of interest. I just wanted to let you know I did call the FPPC, Fair Political Practices Act. Uh, they asked me a few questions. One was, did I receive any monetary remuneration from the Elks? I said, no. They wanted to know if I had a vote in any decision that had anything to do with this topic. I said, no. They said that it was not a conflict of interest. I made sure that I called. I also called our attorney. And actually, our attorney, Don, who's on here, Don Henyon, did tell me that he thought it was the same thing. But he suggested that I do call FPPC, which I did. The fact that somebody is saying how I'm gonna vote offends me, number one.
Saying, saying how you're gonna vote?
Just a second.
Saying how you're gonna vote, okay. Can you repeat what you said, cuz I can't hear you?
Let me finish, okay? The fact that someone is, you know, inferring how I'm going to vote offends me.
I never inferred how you would vote.
Well.
I never inferred.
Could you let me finish?
And, and Don Henyon, the attorney.
Let me finish.
Uh, addressing.
Could you let me?
You weren't here, so don't tell me what I referred to.
And don't tell me how I'm gonna vote.
I didn't tell you how you were gonna vote.
I told you.
But I will tell you, you need to recuse yourself.
But I will tell you that I was actually going to vote with the council. I would have voted because it was the right thing to do. And I just wanted to clarify that. Uh, because it was put in the minutes about somebody insisting and that our attorney had told you that there was no conflict. And I just wanted to let you know that I did call the FPPC. There was not a conflict. And I would have voted for it because I would have thought it was the right thing to do because of the fire.
Yeah. I appreciate, I appreciate you checking into that. And I was curious about too, so I'm glad that you cleared, cleared that up for Mr. McCoy. Yeah, uh, to be clear, um, Don had the discussion with us as a council. Um, I thought you were here at first cuz I couldn't tell cuz nobody was identifying themselves. And, uh, but to be very clear, earlier on, when, earlier, probably about six or eight weeks ago, you had told me that you supported bringing it up in front of the council. And then you killed it by not, by, when I went to see Steve, uh, the old city manager, he called you and said, no, I don't support it. And so I needed to make sure that, that we were clear. Because I do think there's, I think there is a conflict of interest when, when you're voting on something like that. And it doesn't matter to me what, what Don says. Uh, it, what matters is that we do what is perceived as right with the, uh, with the community. So I never.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, then I'll finish.
I would have, I would have voted with that. I just wanted to be clear with my fellow councilmen.
But I, I could not be sure that's what you wanted because you told me you had a certain, uh, you had a certain way that you were leaning prior, uh, when we met on Minor Street, uh, and then you turned that around and changed it. So, so I, I really can't be sure how you're gonna vote. But the fact is, I'm the one that brought that up because I think it needs to be noted. I think it needs to be noted if we're ever audited, that any, if any of us, I, I mean, if it was something to do with a, an organization that I was with, I'd want it noted. Well, that's why we, that's why we need to clear these, throw these things up as far as getting the legal advice. Uh, there's been numerous times that I've accused myself from situations, especially like budget situations because of financial, uh, maybe somebody was, you know, take for instance, like my cousin or one of my cousins or something. Then I would, I would accuse myself from one of those situations. So there's a number of situations and it's good to be clear. But never, never did I infer how she would vote. Right. Only did I infer, and Don, do you recall discussing this that night? Let's. Only did I infer that I wanted the minister to reflect the fact that I had asked for Councilman Freeman to be recused from the vote due to, that I, which I had asked. I didn't know she wasn't on the, and then later, uh, somebody, so she's not even here. So I think there's just, I think there's some confusion, so. And I would do it again, Councilman Freeman, and I, and I would hope you would do it to me. Okay, well, it's, it's all. So, you know, I, thank you. Don't wanna hurt anybody's feelings, just, just wanna be truthful. Thank you.
And I wanna make sure that none of us are bullied into voting this way.
No, we're not, we're not. I, I, I never once did I bully you. Never once did I infer how you were gonna vote. So please don't, don't put that back on me. I never inferred that. No, I'm not done. Never did I infer that. What I, what, hang on, what, Mr. Mayor? One more comment and then we're moving on, please, okay? Yes, that's right. But never did I infer how Councilman Freeman would vote. Never. Never did I bully you. You weren't even here. What I said again was, I believe that Councilman Freeman should recuse themselves. And we had a lengthy discussion about it. Yes, yes. That's, that's all we're gonna go with this, okay? Thank you. So now we're gonna move on to the one B. And we have a, anybody that has a motion? I will make a motion, they don't. I will make a motion to approve one B with the clarification of what was done. What, what's the clarification going to note? What's that, I'm sorry? What will the clarification note? Clarifications is that she found out information that it was legal, what she was doing. That it was what? That it was legal, she found from legal counsel, that was what she, if, from her, even if she wasn't there, she wasn't, so it didn't matter. What clarif, what, why is that clarification needed here? Yes, actually.
Councilmember Barrett, I think we can clarify with stating that Councilmember Freeman consulted FPPC and our city attorney to clarify whether or not she was within her rights, and she was.
I'll second my question, okay? Uh, point of question, that was already clarified in Don's statement that he made. Don, do you recall making that statement and then telling me that, uh, Councilman Freeman had called the Fair Political Practices Commission?
I remember telling you that I referred her to call then.
Okay. Okay, so we're good then? Yeah, okay. So I mean, that was, that was, that's already there, whether it's written in here or not. If we're gonna put it in. Yeah, we're approving it the way it is then. Yeah, if we're gonna put it in, we need to put it in the original minutes. We need to change the minutes. We're approving it, one B is the way it is.
I was just, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, this is Councilmember Freeman. I was just making a point of clarification.
That's fine. Now we, now we are clear, so we're going back to one B, approved, approval of minutes on, on emergency, or, yeah. One B, emergency meeting held on June 29th, 2021. I'll clarify the title of it. I'll make a motion of it. Do I have a second?
Second.
Corey, a second? Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Jones Smith Freeman? So, I'm sorry. Okay. Paul McCoy?
Aye.
Corey Milton?
Aye.
Debbie Barrett?
Aye.
And I, Duane K. Okay. Continued on, motion carried. Okay, great. We are moving on to number two, discussion possible action. Environmental Restoration Strategy Authority. Environmental Restoration Strategy Authority is requesting that the city of Wairika, A, authorize a letter to be signed by the mayor and sent to the secretary Tom Belzak with the US Department of Agriculture. And B, join the city of Montague and the Montague Irrigation District to form this coalition. And do we wanna start off on that one, or are you gonna go ahead and start off this, this one, Tony?
Remember your life, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, let's go with you first then.
Alright. Well, a slight omission in your agenda, the letter should be to two, two identical letters to two agencies. And I took the liberty of printing up five copies and sending them. Uh, one for each year of the city. And you have the proper citations on the codes that is necessary to, to show that you have standing to be considered. And so both Hat, Hat, Manol and Belzak should be identical letters. And good news also, the signs. Number two, the Department of City of Montague Irrigation District, the Copole Lake Fire Protection District has also sent their letters. So, and I'm going to be, hopefully in the next week, talking to Lake Shastina Community Services District. They're a qualifying entity. And trying to build, I'm hoping to build a nice coalition which is due. And this is probably my first time to come together to do this. I think it will show that the government, there's, we're interested here and we're not gonna stand for anything.
Nice, yes, Joan?
Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I realize you put a lot of work in this, Tony, and thank you for all the presentation. However, I will have to say, because of the sensitivity of our water, uh, our water, as you know, comes 26 miles from over across, uh, the Klamath River. It goes actually under the Klamath, it doesn't co-mingle. However, there, it's a very, very sensitive issue. And I believe with protecting our water, I think we need more information on this. So I'd like to continue this item, please.
To what?
To continue it, we're brought, for now, and continue it until we have more information.
Continue, but put on a future agenda again, so.
Well, uh, yeah, we need to have discussions with our attorney. We need to find out some more information about how this would impact our water rights.
Well, I think Don is on the phone, is going to talk specifically about some of this. Is that right, Don?
If you'd like me to, sure.
Yes, please.
Okay, um, so for the last four or five years, we've been engaged in discussions regarding our water diversion, uh, on Fall Creek. And, uh, the location of a endangered species hatchery next to our water diversion facilities. And we've been attending the, uh, Klamath Basin Coalition Meetings, which include all stakeholders, Indian tribes, uh, state and federal wildlife officials, irrigators, um, et cetera. Now, we've been, um, very successful in, um, shepherding our water system through this maze of, uh, basically bear traps, um, to date by, uh, affirmatively staying neutral with all these parties so that we can, um, uh, have frank and open discussions with them. And so that one side doesn't, um, label us as being pro this or pro that. Um, and so, um, I, um, think, uh, it's my well-considered opinion from dealing with all these parties and the attorneys for all these parties and the state and federal wildlife, um, officials, that, um, it would be hubus to, um, stay neutral in, um, anything to do with, uh, issues that touch around the surface of, of our water use, water diversion, irrigation, um, and that sort of thing.
Thank you, Don. Yes, absolutely.
This is, yeah, he brings up a very good point. You're very right. If this is separate, if it doesn't jeopardize your, whatever you're doing on the water, it's, it's, this is totally separate. This is for the drought. So later on, if you choose, the reason, I'd like to read from the code itself, from the Council of Quality Regulations, why cooperating agency is so important. It says in the code, if the meeting agency leaves out a significant issue or ignores the advice and expertise of a cooperating agency, the EIS will be found to be invalid. You could go to these meetings as the city of Wairika, and they can ignore you. If you get designation, which is all you're asking for, you're not asking for anything else but to reconsider a cooperating agency. If you get that designation, you have that authority. Because I'm sure you'll raise an issue that's, somebody's not gonna like. You know, we have very, we have different problems here than, than snow. So that's why I did all the research on this, in fact, which, this is for years, but, but, no one going to that. That's just a lot of history. But that's why I think it's so important.
Gotcha.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, actually, uh, Don, our attorney, Don Henyon, and I have sat on a water committee with federal agencies for many years now, protecting our water rights. And, uh, Don's right, you know, we've worked through it, um, with all the different representatives that are there. And we have received respect, uh, and actually support, um, especially from our local, you know, our local, uh, tribe, tribe. Um, and, uh, and we're in a really good position right now because we've been earning respect, if you will, by sitting at the table and listening, uh, not, not necessarily giving anything away, just being reasonable and talking to people and, and just gaining respect. You know, you know what my, my theory is, right? If you're not at the table, you're on the menu. And we don't wanna be on the menu. So we're at, we are at the table. And we have gained the respect of those agencies as well as the other, the tribes and the other representatives. I'm just concerned, I'm just not certain how this would impact those relationships that we have spent how many years now, Don? Six at least that I can think of. But more than that, since before I was on the council, many, many years. I know that David Semen worked on it too, a number of years. Uh, I just have some concerns about that. And so I'd really like to continue this until we have more information.
So, no, it's table, it's what you're saying. So I don't know how we, you know. Yes. How many times has Anthony Tizzo come before the council? Right. This, this is what, third time? This is the third time? Yeah. I would, I would say. Yeah. I mean, you come four or five, but I mean. Right. Yes, please.
Now, you don't wanna be on the menu, you wanna be, you wanna be the chef and prepare. You have never been the chef in the six years you've been dealing with the feds. You must never, ever had authority. This gives you authority, that's the purpose. It's not gonna jeopardize anything you're doing. Nothing. If anything, it will enhance your ability.
So, Council Milton, Council Milton, Don, can you hear me?
Yes.
Have you reviewed these, have you reviewed these documents that are before us or, um, read anything, um, relating to the subject?
Well, I used to, uh, lecture, uh, across the country on NEPA and coordinating status. And it's, um, it's a highly charged area. I think you'll find that the law is much more complicated than, um, what a cursory review would be. I, uh, again, um, uh, did, um, you know, review the one letter asking for cooperating agency status. And, um, I just, I just, um, you would be surprised when we go to our stakeholders' meetings how, um, easily the tribes take offense to things that, um, the irrigators say. And, um, everyone this particular year is, um, just on the edge of their chair and more excited than I have ever seen them because the Indian fishery, and I believe even in the subs, that their sustenance fishing has been shut down this year. And, um, if there was ever a time for us to sit down and shut up, I think this is it.
Thank you, Don.
Um, Mr. Chairman.
Debbie's done, I'm gonna say something. He's at the force, maybe.
What did they? I did have the opportunity to call Don and have a discussion with him. And I do have a strong feeling about if you have legal counsel listen to him. Um, and he did make some valuable points to me. And whether or not in the end everything would work out well, I have concerns about putting us at risk. So even if we won at the end, the turmoil it creates, the ties with these negotiating groups that we have to work with in the future, it matters. It matters a lot because it's not just this issue. It's everything in the future moving forward that we'll need to discuss and have cooperation with and develop with. So I, I do support legal counsel's advice.
One thing I would like to mention, the environmental officer and the planning director has used this technique for over a decade successfully in dealing with BLM enforcers. You talk to Sean Curtis, and he'll tell you, you know who he is. He'll tell you that this cooperating agency status is the way to get in the door and have a voice that counts. They cannot discount you or put you aside if you have that information. But they can as a city council. You don't have the same authority. It's stated right in the code. So you guys can, you know, either join the coalition or not.
Right. Uh, I think Joan was actually, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jones Smith Freeman, Wairika City Council. Uh, as you know, I sat on the Board of Supervisors for a number of years, for eight years. In fact, at the same time that Sean Curtis was on the Board of Supervisors for Mordot County.
Yes, he was.
And we did make a trip to Washington DC. And we actually delivered documents to the agencies, um, requesting cooperating agency status. And, uh, I mean, it sounds really good, but it really didn't make that much difference, at least with the county. Um, maybe, maybe a little bit. I mean, they, they do give a nod, but it, uh, in, in the negotiations, it really didn't make a big difference. And that, that's been my experience that we're talking about, like you say, 20 years ago. So, uh, you know, I don't know if anything's changed on that, but I did. I went to Washington DC, I handed out the documents requesting cooperating agency status, listing all the legalities of why, uh, it should work. And they just kind of said, yeah, okay, thanks.
I think he was ahead of me, didn't you? Don, um, if we win in the end, everything's hunky-dory. If we don't win, what's the scenario? Lay it out.
Oh, well, the first thing that would happen is that we have our habitat conservation plan under consideration by the, uh, state and federal wildlife agencies. And, um, uh, initially, they were, um, very hesitant. Uh, the Habitat Conservation Plan is a process where we put forth mitigating measures so that if an action, um, arising from our water diversion facility tends to take any endangered species, then we are not penalized. Um, otherwise, it's, um, $50,000 a fish. And, um, there are going to be, um, many hundreds and hundreds of fish. So, um, we, we feel that this Habitat Conservation Plan, um, is very important for us to, um, get NIPS, the National, um, Marine Fishery Service to, to sign off on. And NOAA, um, uh, who's writing up the biological opinion, um, to, um, look favorably on our Habitat Conservation Plan. Um, so, uh, that's one of the major concerns that we have pending right now. We've just, just completed the HCP. It's gone for an initial review to the federal agencies. And, um, pretty soon we will, um, start. We've been waiting for Pacificor to, um, uh, agree with our, um, communications protocol uh, so that we are engaging in the same communications protocol. Basically, a, a triangle between the fish hatchery, the, our water diversion facilities, and the, um, Pacificor, uh, running the hydroelectric facility. So that it, it's a solid mitigation measure. And we're all talking. And we're all talking and coordinating our movements. When Pacificor shuts down that hydroelectric facility. It creates a tremendous amount of turbulence in the water. And so by entering into this communications protocol. We both protect our own water source because we can shut down our water and not have it polluted. And just use our storage facilities. And the fish hatchery can shut down its. Facilities during, during that time. So Pacificors, I think the last link. I believe the hatchery has signed off on our communication protocol. Waiting for Pacificor is the last piece and then we're ready to go.
Okay, so. So if we lose, nothing goes our way. The worst that's going to happen is that we're going to have turbidity, more turbidity in our water. And we're going to have a communication protocol that we're not going to be sued for $15,000 fish, but we're still going to have all our fish. We're not. We're not going to go back to the days when, before Fall Creek, when people put water in their lawns in, in late June, early July. You're saying we're, no, no matter what happens, we're going to keep our full allotment of water.
As long as there's 15 CFS bypass going past the gauge. And that's one of the things that we negotiated in this process. Was that our water permit requires that 15 cubic feet per second. Be going past a specified gauge before we're allowed to draw any water at all. So one of the first things I negotiated was. My concern about the hatchery was that it had a 10 CFS water right. And I didn't want to see a situation arise where. There was the 15 CSF bypass and then. Because there was endangered species being raised next to our facility. Them noting their water use above our water use. Where, which would require 25 CFS before we could draw any water. And in low water season, that simply would mean that we're not drawing anything. So I negotiated with them to take. That the hatchery would take its 10 CFS out of the 15 CFS. So they're both securing their water rights. We only have a 15 CFS before and now we have 15 CFS. Now, and, and I secured it so that we can. Have enough water to draw with our current situation. We entered a mitigation and stipulation before the State Water Board to that effect. And that relieved one of our big concerns.
Okay, so I want to go back to my initial question. If, if we don't prevail in this, if we get the short end, I'm not talking about what we're doing, what Anthony and Tizo was talking about. I'm talking about what we're currently doing, what, what you and Joan have been sitting at the table for the last 10 years. If we don't prevail, if we don't get what we want. We're still getting 15 CFS, we still have protection from the, due to the HCP. And we don't have to worry about, about giving up water for a hatchery. Is that what you're saying?
It's the HCP that I'm worried that could be in jeopardy if the Fish and Wildlife people. Turn against us. So until that's secured, we're in a tenuous situation. $15,000 fish.
Okay, so I'm, again, I'm going to go back because I'm, I'm, I'm a dumb country boy. If the HCP is in plan. Then we don't have to worry about our 15 CFS. In perpetuity and we don't have to worry about the turbidity. We don't have to worry about the fish. Is that correct? So, so people in Warrick would be able to water their lawns next year, the year after, the year after. Into the 2030s, 40s and 50s, even though the dam's coming out.
That's correct. Our, our water. Right is not directly affected by the dam removal. Because Fall Creek goes down into the Klamath. So whether there's sufficient water in the Klamath or not. It doesn't affect our water that we're drawing from. Fall Creek.
Okay, so can we go back again for me to clarify? Why then are we worried about the hatchery if we've got that secure? Why are we worried about turbidity? I mean, I know we've been talking about this the whole time. I've been on the council and I was under the impression that we're still kind of fighting this. And yet what I'm hearing from you is now it's pretty well over. We just need to get that HCP approved and then we're done. So I just, I'm just trying to understand it.
I'm hoping that it's pretty well over. Yes.
What's that?
Hoping it's pretty well over, but we haven't. Until, until people sign off, if you don't know.
Thank you.
Right.
Yes.
And, excuse me, this is Councilmember Joan Smith Freeman. As Don says, and actually a long time before 10 years, probably since we've. We got our original water permit from, as you know, it comes from Pacificor. That they're the ones that have the original one, but we get 15 cubic second feet. And we get half of that, Don. Half of that goes by or half, it's 30 cubic second feet and we get 15, the fish get 15, right? Right. And that said, I mean, we've signed that. That's a document that we have. However. When the water is low, then we run the risk of losing, losing some of that, correct, Don? If, if the water is low in the river. Water for the fish is also 15 cubic second feet.
In the last multiple drought season, Matt said. We barely made it using our water conservation process that the state had mandated. And of course. Watering lawns and washing your car and all those things were taken off the table. We weren't allowed to do that.
Right.
I guess I'm still a little bit. I guess I'm more in the dark now than I was a year or two ago because. That's what I was thinking. Yeah, yeah.
We're on our drinking water for the city of Warrick, right?
Yeah.
You need to look at the MOA, MOU between Pacificor, KRC, Oregon and California. You read that MOU and it says that when the water is low in the Klamath. All sources of water will be implemented to keep the fish going. I'm paraphrasing, which means Fall Creek becomes subject to that fish contingency.
They've threatened that.
It doesn't belong up there. As a citizen of a water user in Warrick.
We, we're aware of that.
Yeah, well, it's.
Yes, Mr. Milton.
I'm sorry.
That's right, I just. I agree with Councilman Freeman that I think we probably need a table issue because now I'm, we're got off track. I think there's unanswered questions that Mr. McCoy has and Don needs to answer for us, so I. I think we need a table.
Well, yeah, I don't think we're off track. This is Council point. I, because I'm asking questions based on what Councilman Freeman was saying to Mr. Antizo, but Mr. Antizo. Is indicating that what I'm asking about and what Councilman Freeman, Councilwoman Freeman, excuse me, is talking about. Are different than what he's referring to. That's why, and because this is the third time we've been here. And, you know, I'm just, I'm not looking necessarily for a vote today, but I, I think we need to, we need to hear more. And I was hoping, Don, that was the reason Don was here, to be able to give us some opinion on that. But the opinion that Don has given when I've asked questions now make, puts me more. I mean, why have we been worrying about water? It seems like it's all taken care of. It's all dealt with. So, so that's, that's what I'm saying.
Right.
That's what I was saying, Councilman Milton.
So in order to table this, though, is the thing that obviously you're on time constraints. You said, correct, Mr. Antizo? You're under time constraints, I'm sorry.
Well, yeah, they're, they're starting the working group. You even want to belong to it, you don't.
Right.
You're not, you're not, you're not, this does not put you in the middle of your water issues. This kind of drought. Looking, working group to be on a drought panel.
I do have a question if I might, Mr. Antizo. Is the county of Siskiyou on that working group?
No, and the reason is they're having a law for counseling. Has advised them to direct their energies to other matters and not get into that at this time. That's why. They're not opposed to it. They just aren't going to direct their resources.
Right.
You know how much they're up against.
I do.
Yeah.
Well, I know a part of it.
Yeah, I know. So they, they don't have enough resources to be in everything. That's why I believe it behooves the local entities to stand up for themselves and form a coalition. And deal with the drought issue to start with. Not your, your water issue is totally separate. I'm sorry, I didn't intend comments. I don't think I got out of my.
No, no, no. I think we got into it. The council got into it. We've commingled and we're seeing, to be seeing it as one, as one.
You're fine. So I guess this is where we need to be. Obviously, we've had basically. If you want to call it motion, but a request for to table it. Now we've had a basically another request to table it. And what do we, I guess, my, my concern is if this does get tabled, what are we tabling to request in the future? So in other words, this is coming back. We can't just have, have, keep having Tony come back. It's, that's not right for him, not right for the public, not right for us. So that's what I'm asking you guys is. What, what kind of clarification are we going to be asking in the next meeting then? To where we don't just keep asking questions and we keep tabling it. That's all I'm asking for.
Well, I think that there are some unanswered questions, as Councilmember McCoy said. And Councilmember Middleton as well. As well as myself. I do think we should table it or at least continue it until we have the answers that we need. And I think we should work with our attorney on that. And, you know, our attorney is also working with our biologist, right? Is that what Gretchen is? On, anyway, on the HCP. The document is going to protect us from the $50,000 per fish. So I think until we have more answers, I. I think that we should, I'd make a motion to table it.
Yes.
By all means, I appreciate all your work and I know you spend a lot of time on this and I appreciate it. I think we all do.
Right.
I just want to make sure I. Understand it fully and.
Well, I guess.
And Don.
My, my concern is. I, I haven't got enough clarity and I, I know this year, I know what direction I'm. I, I understand I've fought for moving to a direction not, you know, to move forward to Siskiyou County as a whole, especially. Our water, retaining our water rights and everything else. I'll just say, I don't want damage to, I don't care, plain and simple, but. I guess I'm, I'm a little unclear because of Don's statement of, of our security of that. That's the clarity that I need. So that's what I'm going, what I'm looking at. So I guess at this point, if we need to table it then, because I need to figure out a little more. That to put my mind at ease. I'm not saying yes or no, don't, don't get me wrong. I'm just saying I, I'm a little uneasy that I don't want to lose any chance that we've had, that we've already made progress doing. And I'm all forward on, on keeping our water rights and, and keeping our dams. And that's for me, that's my own opinion. I can't, that's not the rest of the council. I want to see them, our dams stay, but that's my own. But yes, Mr.
I was just going to agree with you in that I would just, if we have questions, we need to know what the questions are.
Yeah.
And that's what you're asking for. What questions do we have?
My, my.
Continue and I'm not, I'm not sure that we're hearing any of the questions.
I don't have my questions ready yet, so.
Okay.
Good answer.
I have a couple.
Yes.
So after you've formed this coalition, what do you expect to accomplish other than being heard? That other entities aren't moving forward with as we speak because there's the water users and. There's so many more entities that are working on drought policies.
Water users, the organization behind this, that's who I represent. That's how we got this started. We had, we had our rights come here and. That was all part of the water users. That's, that's where this comes from. So what I would like to see then is if you do. Long to the coalition, you prepare an agenda, some of the items that you wish to address on the drought issue for Siskiyou County.
And nobody else is doing this?
Nobody.
What are?
Right, okay, what happened? And I, maybe, let me recap. Back in April. The Department of Interior and the Department of Agriculture held a news conference. Sponsored by the White House. In that news conference, the White House directed both of those agencies to form a working group. And to go out into the community. Two areas specifically. Colorado River Basin and the Planet Watership were selected the drought working group. Those two areas. And Bill Sack said he wants to work with local government, local residents. And farmers in solving the drought issues.
And why do you think the Water Users Association isn't adequate to perform these tasks?
They can't.
Why not?
They're not a legal entity. They're just, we're just a nonprofit. We cannot.
And the coalition.
Group. We can be part of the group as a nonprofit, yes. All they will do is listen to us. They, we won't have authority. We cannot be a cooperating agency.
Because you're not an entity. Because you're not an entity. You're not a legal entity.
It's like a non, if you went as the city council to the working group, you'd be a nonentity. You would just be the city council. You would have no authority. You could say anything you wanted and they do not have to take it. If you put it aside as a cooperating agency designation, they cannot put it aside. It's the only difference.
I don't know. It seems like there's a lot of different groups working on the drought crisis at this point.
All of the tribes signed up and then immediately got recognized. Every tribe in Siskiyou County. They're going to have the only voice on what to do about the drought. You guys aren't going to have anything to say. You can go talk about it. They don't have to take your suggestion. Not as a city council, they don't, not legally.
Yes, Joe.
That brought up a question that I have too. Thank you, Councilmember Baird. So the cooperating agency and the coalition, what is the cost? What would be the cost of that?
Your time and maybe some paper and ink.
Okay, but not no legal money, no.
Me and the water users will provide all of the data. All of the information you would need to sit at the table and intelligently speak with them. We're going to provide everything for that. You guys won't have to do that. Just like those letters. I, I did them according to the structure required, citing the codes required. To be a cooperating agency. You have to follow a certain protocol. So your cost is very minimal. Because we're going to do all the work. And if you don't like it, you can withdraw anytime. This is not a contract. You don't have to, if you say, hey, we don't like the way things are. Forget it. It's that simple. There's no downside to this. You're, and all about your water rights or anything else because you're talking about how to solve a drought issue.
Yes, my motion stands.
Okay. Okay.
And one more question.
Yes.
But I still haven't got a second, so it isn't legal.
The deadline.
It's kind of ambiguous. I was kind of going on the deadline they had set up on scoping for the dam issues. Figuring that would be a good timeframe. But there is no specific deadline. I, I just think the longer we take to sit on this thing, you know, at some point. They've already, as far as I can tell, they've already started to have interaction between the tribes and the two agencies. And nobody else is talking to them. Nobody's contacted them, but I know of.
I guess that'd be something I would like to know more about.
You would think.
The tribes are actually, if the tribes are having this conversation, then I would like to know that.
And I'd like to know what other irrigators are on that too, because like the Klamath Irrigators and the Tulley Lake, they're always involved. So I'd like more information.
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's.
So I'll second your motion.
Table it until we find out.
Can we find out more information?
Would you want me to do the answer?
That's our staff. We're going to work with our attorney and we're going to find out more information. That's our staff. We're going to work with our attorney and we're going to find out more information.
I'm sorry, I'm tired of doing this.
Oh, that's.
Okay, that's.
Have a motion in a second.
We have a motion in a second, yes, on the tabling. So I guess we can do a roll call and tabling. Joan.
Hi.
Alma Boy.
Nate.
Corey Milton.
Hi.
Hi.
I'd like to say hi to, I want to find out a little more information. So let's table, sorry.
Thank you, Tony.
Thanks, Johnny.
No, 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 no.
We'll find out more.
Everything you want.
Thank you, Tony.
And I'll be calling you.
Yes.
Yes, I have a few more questions.
Is it regards to this?
Yeah.
I, yes, then.
Restoration. I think we need to look up the definition of restoration.
Okay.
Because that means to put it back the way the river was. To restore the environment of the Clamath River.
Correct. That's a very good point. Thank you. Alrighty, let's move on to number three, discuss some possible action. Authorized American Fire Chief to execute and sign the documents necessary to achieve the purpose of the Community Wildfire Protection Plan as submitted by the Wairika Fire Safety Council. Thank you again for coming back.
Hey, fortunately I have a nice light and period presentation tonight. As water dispire and potential.
Yeah, just fire, it'll be just that.
Right, yeah. I'm Jay Perkins, team lead for the Wairika Fire Safety Council Community Welfare Protection Plan. And I thought I would start out and first, when Mayor Keg called me up about 15 minutes before my last presentation, I was a little upset, but I got over it because in the end, in working with Mr. Henyon, I think we have a better product. And I think that, and it's, and it says what you want it to say and that's good and that's okay. So you know what? I'm over it. So.
Thank you.
No, thank you. And, and Mr. Henyon was easy to work with.
Good.
So I, I am hoping we get a vote and hopefully your signature tonight and maybe even Chief Lemos' before, before I leave. But I'd also like to take an opportunity to do a little educational information because it all fits into this package about community welfare protection. And I do this because in case you haven't noticed, this is one heck of a fire here. And it's not getting better and it's still July. And I'd like to address that as it relates to yours to the, to the CWTP, the Community Welfare Protection Plan. I was here in April and I did a presentation on the Community Welfare Protection Plan. And we weren't quite finished and we had a little bit more analysis to do. And I stand before you today with a finished final product. It's been reviewed, sent out to at least 15 people. I had comments back from six or seven. And again, because of Mr. Henyon, I think it's a far better job. Is it perfect? You know, these things are always a work in progress. Nature will have her way of forcing this back to the table without a doubt. Kind of as a means to, as a recap of the recap, again, the entire area of the Wairika Fire Safety Council that we represent is 58,300 acres. But the city is only 63, 6400 acres. So we represent basically, try to consider, basically it's the zip code. Everything from Hawkinsville all the way up to Cranmill. And from the ridge to a little bit beyond where the interstate is. So with that, the actual plan, which I, I, which I brought tonight, and again, I don't know how your protocol works, Mayor Keg and whether or not I can get you to sign this actually tonight. But here's the entire plan. It's, it's, the draft is public. It was on the Northern California Resource Senator's webpage, the draft. And once I get this signed, once we get this signed, you know, get you to, the council authorized yours, Chief Lemos' signature. I'll go through the requisite other signatures. Yours is a recommending signature as is Chief Lemos' or Chief Anzo Califar. He's approved of it. Okay, so he's ultimately the one. And he already told us, he's, he's, he reviewed it, gave us great comments. He said, hey, just get it to me. I'll prove it. So we're, you know, we're ready to move on. So with that, so this entire document is, there's three parts to it. The first part is basically spells out what the issues are. We talk about the Wairika area, the local policies, both federal, state and local. And needless to say, we go into depth about the welfare situation in the greater Wairika area. And, and of course, we get into the science. And we really tried to focus on the science and the analysis so that what you have in here isn't, well, this is what I think. This is what we're, you know, we're able to, you know, conjure up based on some of the best science and the best model. I feel very confident about that. The second part of the plan is actually the planning areas. And that's what's in your packet. It's just the, your, the city is one of 10 planning areas. And the city actually goes across four other planning areas. But we thought it was in the city's best interest as well as help Wairika Fire Department to, to cookie cutter all the data so that you have a succinct set of data. And that's what you have before you in the packet. So that's, that's what the plan is. And I'll go ahead and carry on and I can take questions anytime you have them or I will entertain them later. The first thing I want to do is, and this all fits into this, and is I want to share with you the recently issued Fire Behavior Advisory from Northern California. And if I want to scare you, well, I want you to sit up and take notice. If you haven't already, I want you to sit up and take notice. Cause this is what I sent this to Chief Lemos and to Chief Paul and out on my webpage. But basically, this is a, this is to fire managers and others to sit up and take notice. They're ones of the city members. It's, and I gave one to, it's to sit up and take notice. Okay, this is not usual where we are right now. And yes, we always have fires. But where we are right now is not, are not usual conditions. Underscore that. Another handout for you to make my point. Again, this will tie, again, we'll tie right into.
Oh, I guess.
This will tie right into where we are. This part is an indication of where we are with our nature in the, in the northern part of the state in which the bulk of the system, county is in the Cervi Shasta Valley and, oh, it's, this is you. Take notice of that blue line. And I don't know, your backgrounds and being able to read graphs and understand them, but look at the blue line. That is where we are. We are above 97th percentile.
Wow.
We are setting records. Okay, when I say we, it's the whole North State, hence that fire advisory. And I, and I want to make that because a lot of what we, when we did the analysis, which I'll get to here, was really predicated on, here you have early season conditions, one end of the book in, I'll show that in a minute. Then we have into the fire season types of conditions. Well, guess what? Those have all accelerated. We are there now. We are at what you would call the peak of the fire season and we're not even into the fire season. So that's the point I wanted to make. And, and I really want to, I hope I grabbed your attention because that's the point of this, is to grab your attention. So, did I do it?
Yes.
Perfect. So far so good. So if you will, just go ahead. Do you have your packets that you got from, in your work packet?
Yes.
So just come through that until you get to, there'll be, there'll be something that says analysis of expected fire behavior. So when we put this together and it'll explain the ensuing drafts that are in your packet. And by the way, I made copies of this and give them to Chief Lemos so he has them readily available for his folks once I get this all done and working with Siskiyou laser. What, what I, the point I want to make is that what I will show you with these ensuing charts is, again, early fire season. This is typically June. And by early fire season, that's when the kind of transition into it takes more resources. It's not just one engine, but it's several engines. And usually about, like I said, usually about two. 97th percentile, and I won't tell you that I was pressured or anybody else. We went higher than normal in part, wanted to make an impression that what occurred on the car fire, what occurred in Paradise, what occurred on the Tubbs fire, Santa Rosa and so on and so forth, have occurred under extraordinary circumstances. And, and so we wanted to be able to paint a picture that when those things happen, life is different. And that we really need to pick up and, and, and take note. And so we wanted to model that far end. I couldn't tell you a year ago that that far end would be the middle of July. So we're there. Okay, so through the page. So the, the first, there's a, there's a graph there and that's called, excuse me, two charts. Okay, that's called burn probability. Burn probability is we modeled 25,000 fire starts across the whole, across the whole area. And, and Wairika's fair share of these fire starts, we did it early season and we did it for late season. And so the chart on the right is, is late season. And, and what this means is, is that when we modeled these fires, that where it's darker, it's wanting to burn there repeatedly. Okay, so what we found is that when we modeled these fires and let them burn for a burn period or two, that these, these areas, these pixels would burn over and over and over again. So the darker, the, the more likely the probability that the fire would burn in there. And you can, you can see the whole east side, you see Butcher Hill, you can see where your old Gulf Coast was. You see rolling hills, et cetera, et cetera, are areas that do want to burn. Okay? Next page. This is what we call our suppression opportunity map. And what the suppression opportunity is, that what we did was that we, we took a couple of fire suppression parameters and put them together as an indication of where will Chief Lemos be successful in the initial attack part. But not just Chief Lemos, also Califar, et cetera, et cetera. And so, and I guess yours are black and white, but the darker, the darker the color, that is, the greater, the more resources that you are going to need. And, and you start to reduce the probability that Chief Lemos and others will be successful in initial attack. And that it will take a whole bunch of resources. So that's what, that's what those represent. And again, you can see now, of interest, I want to point something out. Is again, the Gulf Coast area, the old Gulf Coast, lights up early and late. Okay, you look at some of the side, you look at some of the areas immediately west of the city, they light up both early and late. That should be a heads up. Okay, that should be a heads up as areas of, of potential focus by the city. All right. Let me, in your last, let me, let me, let me. So this last, so this last piece is kind of a compilation of areas of concern. Made the presentation to Chief Lemos and the executive, your board, where are you? So I made a presentation to both the executive committee and to the whole fire department on what you're saying here. And to show where some of these priorities are, and I'm going to leave Chief Lemos have a big wall charge for it to paint up and use it to start, you know, use it as a real time, as a real time means to, you know, start focusing your efforts. So let me, let me, let me just explain this for a minute. The areas that are the red blobs have a high percentage or probability, if you will, of areas that would be very difficult or excuse me, difficult to contain. So that's what those, that's what those blobs are. So there are fuels, vegetation, it will be very problematic in a large, in a large, in a relatively large area. These are areas that the Fire Safety Council is saying you may want to take a look at and start prioritizing for work. I have one exception, which I'll get to here in a minute. The next thing I want to show is you'll see some red and orange polygons around the city. And those are areas that we, upon our analysis, took a look at and said, these are areas of concern that, I'm not saying that those holes will burn, but they have a high probability that you have sparks flying in or whatever, that those ought to be priority areas for doing home hardening, defensible space work, prevention work or whatever because they are proximate to some kind of a highly volatile or variable fuel. That's what that means. Now, you'll notice that there are red polygons and orange polygons, okay? This year, right now, both are virtually the same. The red polygons were areas that lit up during the whole fire season, from early season to late season. Okay, so in other words, there is a fuel within that polygon that could be problematic, okay, that could were to burn. Okay, and then, and then the, the orange is, would be later fire season, but we're already there. So basically, as you can see, there are many areas in the city that probably need to be looked at and, and considered with respect to whatever the activities are that your, your compliance officer may take a look at or the chief or whatever. Okay? So that is, that is that map. The one thing that's not on here, but it is in this, that is in the pros, is I want to raise your attention Butcher Hill. Now I raised Butcher Hill in part, and I've already talked with our sponsoring 501(c)(3) is we're considering our next round of funding to go to MLOP and Butcher Hill. Because if you don't have communications, you have a problem. Okay, I'm not saying people's homes should be a lower priority. All I'm saying is if things go to a heck of a handbasket, you want to make sure that you have communications you need. Cause you've read about that. You read about that with the Paradise fire. So Butcher Hill shows up as a high probability that it would like to burn. And so we put it into the plan as an area that ought to rise to the top in addition to all other priorities. Okay, Wairika Creek, rolling hills, Oak Ridge, I mean, they're all priorities. But if everything's a priority, nothing's a priority. So it's a matter of sitting down and coming up with how do we want to do this? And how do we want to proceed? So, that is that. All right. All right, questions? Again, I appreciate, I appreciate you getting me in touch with your city attorney, Mayor Keg. That was great.
Actually got in touch with me.
Oh, however it works. He got in touch with me.
Exactly.
However it works.
I just wanted to make sure it was legal.
However it works, it worked.
I was, being I'm not legal, I was ready to sign it last time, so.
Well, we did, like I said, we took some wording and it made him happy and if it makes you happy in the county.
That's why we have.
And remember that Chief Lemos and you are, the council are recommending officials. Ultimately, it's approved by Chief Anzo Califar. So that's, that's where it is. So once the F, the council authorizes Mayor Keg and Chief Lemos to sign it, I need to get several other signatures. I'll get those photocopied. And then eventually, I'm presuming you would want it on your webpage somewhere.
Yeah.
And I'm probably a couple of weeks away from that once we get signatures. And we'll certainly avail it to you. It'll be, you know, it'll be, it'll be available in different formats. I'll also present it again on our Facebook page for people who.
So my question is, these projects, like you said, Butcher Hill and stuff like that, what, what do you think of the timeline and stuff of those might be?
That, that's a good question. And, and I say that because we just closed a grant cycle through the California Climate Initiative. Okay, and there'll be another one in a year.
Right.
However, the state also available another $530 million to do work for home hardening and other types of projects. What we don't know is how that, I don't know yet how that money will become available. And so one of the things we wanted to do is put a working group together to start setting priorities and get some of these projects at least in a position such that as soon as we get wind that there are grant monies available, then we can start to, we can start, we can apply for them. But we want to be ready because I don't, we don't know what the timeframe is. So we do know there'll be another cycle, you know, next year for Califar, California Climate Initiative, a lot of money. And we have several grants already in. One is to do some work at the upper end of Great Horn. And Green Horn Creek, kind of as a starting point, so we can work our way and figure out how to work our way down the creek. Another one is to put a working group together, what, I mean, put a working group together so we get powers to be together and say, what are your priorities? So they're not our priorities, they're your priorities, they're the Cal Fires, they're the chiefs and whatnot. So we, we've got that grant in. We're waiting hopefully to do that. To get that one. So, so anyway, uh, there's a lot of money, a lot of competition.
Yeah.
And the idea is, is that this will put you closer to the top of the heap. And I've already spoken, speaking with, uh, Chief Paul, Southway Rika Fire Department. And Chief Lemos is, uh, you know, they're, they're very, very supportive of this.
Both the chiefs are awesome guys. I just want to add that. I mean, we're so lucky.
You are.
Paul and, and Lemus are both just so knowledgeable in this, in this whole area and what we're going through, you know? And there's, it's amazing. So to have those guys on board and to be able to help us out through these trial, trouble times. And I just want to add that, uh, these are, these drought conditions are, they're real. They're more extreme than I've ever seen. I've lived here my whole life. My family's lived here since the eighteen fifties. So it's like, you know, I've seen some, some drought. Our well, I have my house where I live up on Ranch Lane there. I had a, a, our well, which is a hand dug well, um, dug back probably in the nineteen thirties, went dry. First time it's went dry. The people that lived there before, I, I contacted her and Oz, uh, William, still lives, does that Eugene. I contacted her and she said her whole life that, that well's never went dry. And that's first time. So it's like, that's scary. That's real scary. So yes, David.
Okay. You said questions?
You bet. I meant my twenty minutes.
Well, I have my list.
I went over mine. I went over my thoughts. Councilwoman Freeman really did a good deal.
I did not. Did not. That was good.
Never.
Yeah, never.
Um, okay. So is there a way, have you ever done this kind of, um, resource documentation before?
What do you mean by that?
Well, I want to know if this particular document allows for addendums as we learn and grow.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. I needed to hear that.
And, and we want it to be adaptable. So as conditions, as things change, politics, social, fire, whatever, that there is a means by which to, it's not locked.
Thank you. Thank you. Needed to hear that.
Yes.
Living.
That's the intention.
Yes. And the other question is regarding, excuse me, volunteers for the evacuation. Um, Chief Lemus, if, if the volunteers are, are, have you discussed the responsibilities of, for these volunteers? Are they on board with it? And if there is a plan depending on where the fire might break out, is there an evacuation plan that can be printed and included in the water bill so people are ready about? I know you've already printed and informed about the go box and that kind of thing, but an evac- evacuation route specific to whatever area.
We haven't gotten to that point yet. And I'll tell you, the evacuation routes really can be problematic. I think Chief Lemos, I just said in agreement.
Okay.
Reason being is, um, with special fires on one hand, if you, within the first minute, if you don't get it within the first minute, that fire, what we're seeing in the, in the wildlands, um, Jay? We're talking, the acres that you're seeing overnight on some of these fires is a little bit lethal. So that could, could actually screw up your whole evacuation route before you can actually get your revenge and tell them it's a scam.
Okay. So it's actually not a good idea then?
It's, it's something that is, that really has to be a work.
Okay.
You have to redefine.
Educate me. I'm good with that.
Yeah. Well, that's, you talked about that earlier. Uh, Mark and I talked briefly about that before, as part of evacuation routes. As a, you know, uh, the hard fast rule, yeah, it's not a good idea to do that.
Okay.
You have to get to the people and do it on the fly. You know, I mean, it's always a good idea to know your, your best route. Most people do because they live in this town. However, if you say, you know, like when you have the rain fire, you say, go down, um, North Ridge and maybe a maybe a better way to go would be going farther south and then down to avoid the, I think, might be, you know, injury on that evacuation route. So you get the idea.
Right, right. If you see the smoke, go the other way.
Yeah.
Maybe.
Having said that though, yeah, I'm on a disagreement. We have identified perimeter routes. I've also identified those areas that may need some fuels work along. Because our aid also in evacuation is to know that at least if you're going to go down that road, that, that whatever, that at least you will have abated some of the hazardous fuels conditions on that. Some of that's been indicated, um, in our analysis and it probably needs to be, you know, more finely tuned. And granted, within the city, it's, it's, you don't have that many. When you look at the whole big picture, there's a number of roads that probably would require a little bit of attention to, you know, get in there, uh, do some hundred foot climbs on either side, et cetera, et cetera. So people can pass it.
I thank you so much for this.
Yes, no, thank you very much. Thank you. Sounds like there's, like, like since it's work in progress, no matter how you look at it, especially it comes to evacuation, it sounds like it needs to be something that's coordinated with like code enforcement also. Um, cause code enforcement has a lot of, um, uh, power, not power, but, uh, authority to clear up some of these areas that are very high hazard in some of these personal lots. And I know that because it's right behind my houses, one of those major spots. Yes, sir.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. John Smith Freeman, uh, city council member. Uh, Jay?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
For this. This was a lot of work. And I saw the original copy. It's probably two hundred pages.
Yeah.
Two twenty-two.
Actually, it's over that.
Yeah.
It's over two hundred. So, uh, a lot of work went into it. I want to thank you for that. I also want to thank you for working with our attorney and our fire chief. And, uh, I, I think we're all worried. This is, this is a year not like any other year.
No.
Uh, and when we've got over three hundred thousand acres burning in the west right now, it's pretty scary.
It's over a million.
Is it?
Yes.
Oh, wow.
Well, that one fire is three hundred thousand acres, I think, just a.
Probably four hundred by right now.
Probably. It's, it's creating its own weather. I understand. Uh, so, uh, Mr. Lemus, Chief Lemus, if you could come down, please. I just, no, I want, I want both of you. I want both of you here because I just, I just have a couple of, I just have a couple of questions.
It's not like she used his middle name, so.
What is his middle name? I could, if I knew his middle name.
Yeah.
Gerald Lemus. No. Uh, it's, uh, so important for us all to be on the same page, especially during these really crazy times. So that's, that's my question. I heard you say, you're talking to Chief Lemus, uh, as well as Chief Vanzo. I'm really pleased to hear that. Um, for Cal Fire and, and local all working together. So Chief Lemus, are you comfortable with this? Have you been through the documentation and you feel like we're covered on this? Now, I appreciate what, uh, council member Baird had to say is that it's a li- living document. So if, because these types of conditions change all the time, right? But are you comfortable with this to protect the city of Wairega?
And I think it's important to note that down the road, no matter who is in this territory, the chief is, that, well, I'm just saying that down the road is to refer to that document and know the work that you did. Do a reevaluation, do a modeling after you've done some of the work, right?
Correct.
And see, it can show you, now this is not quite the same, um, concern as it was before because of the tree. That's kind of what I'm, what I would like to see over time. We give some of these projects, go through some of the money that's available. And go back and show then and now.
Map, right. Map what's been, what's been bended and what's been sort of fixed. And then the other.
And that's exactly why I was.
And then priorities.
Right. And that's why I was stating that it is a living document.
Yeah.
And as work gets done, the next iteration would reflect that. Matter of fact, well, I won't do it right now. So it, it is problematic, but it's doable. And as long as your city and the fire department and, uh, Southway Rika and Cal Fire stand behind, you know, making all this work, it will work.
I just want to add some of the projects that they've done, you know, the Traggy project is, that's huge. That saved our town, literally. That has already saved our town. And that's, that was, if it wasn't for that project, we would have had a good chance of burning down that last badger fire. So.
Well, thank you for the good job. And I would make a recommendation of everyone's comfortable with it, that we have you sign it for us. He, you need his signature.
Yes. I mean, I, we wanted to get the city, um, we, we wanted to get the city, yes, because jury said I'll sign it plus points.
Wayne. Oh, Wayne, you gotta sign it.
The essence of collaboration.
Yeah, exactly.
Take a look.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor.
I was, like I said, I was ready to sign it last time, but no one's, no one's very legal. That's why we have was our attorney. So he cleared up things and got her straightened out. Now I'm ready to lock the doors.
Thank you, Don.
Thank you, Don, for giving us great.
I think he's just kind of.
Was that a motion, Joe?
Oh, yes, that's a motion. Has presented.
And, and since I'm signing, I'll second it.
All right.
Okay, roll call. Um, Jones, come here.
Aye.
Paul McBoy.
Aye.
Corey Milton.
Aye.
Debbie Barrett.
Aye.
Wayne K.
Aye.
Ocean's Carrie.
Do you have to sign it?
I can sign it. I think, I think we got a double whammy. Cause I think Arthur's got it here, but you know what?
If you sign it, we'll blue down and so.
Yep, got it.
Okay. So for the show.
Thanks, Jan, for all your work.
You're welcome.
Yes.
Yes.
Appreciate it.
Little light reading.
Well, it was a little light.
A light reading, yeah.
Yeah.
Nice. But it's so important.
Thank you.
That's our roadmap.
Yes.
It, it, you know, and, and I, I'm, I'm very hopeful that, um,
Oh, everybody.
That, that you can sit down, your compliance officer with your, with your chief and start prioritizing areas. There are some areas that you're relatively working. Do, sort of, take a look at where you want to start soliciting grant monies.
I have.
Go do work within the city. Um, and at the end of the day, I'm really, really hopeful that maybe I get some home hardening, defensible space monies. Really work with the citizens on making their homes. Cause obviously some are in greater concern.
Yeah.
Posted on my refrigerator, if I might, Mr. Mayor. Posted on my refrigerator is my to-go list. Uh, and it partially packed in the cart and the rest of it is just a few last minute things. I just think, I'm hoping it's not going to happen, but we all need to be.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for your time.
No, thank you.
Concerned and, um, we're deserved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And happy anniversary. That was last one.
I hope it gets done within the next ten days. I'm going to go visit my grandson.
That's a priority.
You're not getting the signature?
Well, the senior grandkids. That too, but grandkids, family always comes first.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Danny Jay.
All right. So. So that concludes this part of the meeting. Uh, we'll go into city manager and staff reports. So Randy, do you have anything? Do you want to?
You drank a Beth already?
I was going to say that, but I was like.
No, I'm kidding.
I hope you're not going to, never mind.
Don't say it.
I won't say it.
Okay. Is, uh, any of the staff, anybody, Mark, do you have anything you want to?
Oh, my goodness, Mark, you need to catch us up.
Where do you start? Where do you end?
Mark has lots of stuff.
Yeah.
Busy. Busy.
Randy, Kate, man, it's a nice quiet town. And then I showed up to his office, they started crying. It's been super busy.
Yeah.
We're short staffed. We lost another employee.
Oh, no.
Yeah. We're, we're short and.
You lost him?
We got, yeah.
You haven't found him yet?
Yeah, no.
A police officer, patrolman or?
Resigned. Totally resigned. And so we're very short. So everyone should know how, obviously those guys are there, they are just working their tails off right now. They're all, as of today, checking in on. They're all ten to fourteen cases down every day each. I've been patrolling. I've been patrolling on Saturday. I've been working all day today on my trolls. So if you're not hearing from me, it's because I'm out. I was on search forms today. Councilor McCall helped me with, McCall helped me with the call to Walmart. He was running up to the state inside of us. Um, it's been super busy. So we're making some schedule changes. So the citizens have their coverage. And our guys have the coverage and the protection. So that, that's really all I have. I don't have a lot to report on the crimes that happened because of our, because of progress, you know, we know how that goes. But there's been a lot of.
Yeah.
Scary. I have a few questions, but we definitely need to work on that staff because we are very short.
I can verify that Acting Chief Gilman has been out because I had contacted him on matters and he has been in the field. When I contact, well, he contacts me. But I mean, when I call in for dispatch, um, and they weren't, they're civil police when I was some, you know, credit union issue. And I would just have him call me when he has time and they say, he's in the field, he'll call you whenever. So.
Saturday.
Thank you, Chief.
Main Street.
Yeah.
So. I saw him patrolling Saturday, last Saturday.
I, I also want to thank him. I don't know if you saw Saturday. I want to thank you for keeping them all safe. Um, I, I, I think some citizens don't understand that we don't stand on highways, in the middle of highways. And so I know that I completely stopped and waited for them and they waved me by and I said, no, I'm, I told you this already, I'm not, I'm not going. Uh, I'm not going to drive while you're standing in the middle of a highway. And finally they moved to the side, but I know that you have been out there with, and I know you dealt with some other stuff that you shared with me, where you were very patient, very kind, and I thank you for that. You're keeping them safe. I know that local law enforcement cares about a- all of our population and that includes the monk population. And I thank you for that. And I, and I commend you for that.
Thank you. Yeah, we respect our right to do that. I had a very good report with them. I had to stop the crowd twice, blocking roads. And I went up there myself into the crowd and stopped probably a hundred people two different times. And they all listened and we got out of the way. And I had stopped one car that had eight people in the back of it, with a flag, so a bunch of signs. And I had to stop them in the middle of two hundred protesters. And they were all very blocked with, I stopped with them. I had a very good report. It went smooth. They, they skirted the laws a little bit, but we got them in track.
Well, like I said, appreciate, we appreciate, all of us appreciate your devotion. It's like, to have you out there, it means a lot to the community too. It's, it's amazing to see our chief of police standing up and, and, and keeping our city, our city safe. It's like, it's cool. It's really neat to see. It really is. We're working hard at it firsthand. Yes, Jones, sorry.
Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm, uh, Jones Smith Freeman, council member. Are there, if I may ask you, chief, are there demonstrations going on every day now?
So there's a hunger strike going on. That's twenty-four hours a day. And we have some people with them who's been very well behaved, very respectful. That hasn't been a problem. That's on county property. It's the state courthouse, but it's a county issue. So we haven't had to deal with that other than some extra full stuff that I had. Um, the protests leave about once a month and they throw this one in between. So we have an extra one which was, so you know, not so basic last minute. So I have a current stamp of the legal way. I've talked to their representatives, their attorney to get permits. I shut the street down, it comes up, whatever they want. They haven't been able to follow through with that yet. So I keep working with them to deal with the legal way.
Sheriff Larue has met once. I think he plans at least two more meetings formal with their representative. Cause they've both been broadcasting.
We're working on it.
Thank you, chief. Is there any other staff reports, Arthur, or does anybody else have anything? No? Chief Lemus, you have anything to add?
Okay, I'm Jerry.
Two things. Uh, I've been speaking to you for some time now about the water tender. I spoke with the, um, general manager today at Golden State in, probably two weeks. So hopefully for the August third meeting, you'll be sitting out here. You know, get out in the hot sun, take a shower. But anyway, they shouldn't be here. It's, uh, they're, but they're just super busy and they're, they're shorthanded as well. And they had like five apparatus that all showed up at the same time for pre-delivery inspection. So it's, you know, just like when your vehicle, if you buy new and order it, it comes to the site, they go through and make sure everything's good before they enter the team. Same thing here. So. Same, it's, we're going to need it. I mean, it's, we're like, I need it now, need it yesterday. But they're just, they're doing the best they can. Um, secondly, I had a really good meeting with, um, Mr. McBoy and Scott Hodgson, the, um, back press representative for the, the property here, the former shop store.
Right.
Yeah.
Um, so what can add that I think is, um, important for you all to hear is, um, there is a highway project coming up, Highway three project. And there's some options there for the city to, I think they should look at it. Um, as opposed to saying, well, we're going to wait until we get grant A, B, and C, whatever. There's options that they can help us with for some financing. And I think it's worth at least looking at. No one would say, you know, you have to do this, we're going to hold you to it because obviously it's a lot of money. But I think they're willing to work with us and that's.
But I think they're willing to work with us, and that's what Scott has said, and, yeah, so, I think it's important for you to know that, and I wanna see some. I'm gonna try to put some things together for you, some, some visuals, um, he has some drawings that he's put together, which I don't necessarily agree with all of them, and I'm gonna have him tweak them a little bit, and the biggest part is having him explain, once he's able to talk to his staff. And see what those options are as far as financing, of course, and, and from there, I think it's up to you all and Don to, you know, make sure that you're comfortable with it, but have something going, so we're not waiting ten, ten more years, we're still having the same discussion. 'Cause I know there's a lot of huge topics right now before you, so, I'm very cognizant of that, however, if you don't hear from me, you're gonna say everything's okay.
Yeah.
And, um, I'm gonna push for it as much as I can without stepping on toes, but you guys know that, 'cause you're all for it, you're all on the standing station, but.
Yep.
I think we need to look, think outside the box.
Yeah.
With, you know, with Rhett on board, I mean, she's fantastic, before, she's not here anymore, I think, you know, have her do some advising for us, and find out what, you know, what would work best, so. So there's, you know, we're gonna stop, there's things they can do for us that would probably be, you don't always get those opportunities, I'm not saying that's the only site, but that's one, if it, if everything fit and came together, I think it's worth a lot. Absolutely, so, and I don't even know all the details yet, but it's, he said there's some options, people look into for us.
Great, so. That's, that's great, well, I, nope, Debbie, first.
That's what I needed to hear, is, is that you are acceptable with that as the position, location.
Yes.
Okay.
It's definitely, we need to look at it a little closer, I, Matt Ray about some of the repairs that Scott was also doing, um, forthright, and, and, uh, there's documentation that we can get from the engineer, which was a local engineer that did all the. The, uh, subsidence, I guess, you will, is the proper term.
I mean, the hole in the middle.
The hole was there, yeah, so, those are the things that we can look into and make sure that, you know, we're satisfied, 'cause, you know, who wants to, the building on something is.
Yes, Mr. Paul.
Yeah, sorry, Paul.
This, this is, uh, Councilman McCoy, I wanted to thank Jerry for meeting, uh, with us too, um, the one thing Jerry brought up, I had never thought of, uh, maybe you, somebody here, have thought of it, but Jerry said, hey, Paul, guess what? If you put, whether you put it there, or you put it at, uh, Ron Rouse's old place, whatever, and you put it on Main Street, guess what, if we wait to put it, if we wait to get the lot, and to improve the lot, after the highway.
Go up.
Uh, no, they're not gonna let us improve the front of it, they're not gonna let us change approaches, and things like that, so, I mean, Jerry brought that to you, just, Paul, you gotta think about that, doesn't matter which one we get, if it's on Main.
Right.
We have a problem, so if we have come to find a lot, and I know we've talked about it as a council, and I think we're in agreement on this.
Yeah.
For the most part, but if, if, you know, um, Jerry brought up that point, that we have to.
Good point.
That I, I never thought about it. They're not gonna allow us to dig stuff up, or do anything once we put that out.
Well, I do.
It isn't just going and making sure that you have the approach right, you know, with the sidewalk, instead of having a drop off, you have, there's gonna be other issues with all that, so, anyway, that's just my point, is like, if we can. I don't say move at light speed, but we need to be moving forward and determining.
This is government, you silly man.
Yes.
It only moves at light, it only works at light speed when we don't want it.
Yeah.
But I'm an optimist, and I believe in, in, everybody, we're pulling in the same direction, so I tell my firefighters all the time, that everybody's pulling in the same direction, you know, generally speaking, we're gonna be okay, but, um, I wanna give you that information, and thanks for that.
Yeah, thank you, I appreciate you pointing stuff out.
Glad you guys did that, I also have some more ideas for that property, it's a big piece of property, and I think, I think it's an option, I, I do agree with you that, you know, we need to look and make sure that's the right one, but. You know, it's nice to have the option.
I was just thinking someday for it to be, you know, where the other ones sell, or are not on the table, and that's, that one is one of them, and then we're left with, you know, one that doesn't really fit.
Yeah.
It's, it's a difficult matter which way you go, I, I understand, so, you know, we have options now, so I think researching each ones that are on the table, and doing the study, and, you know, like I said, we can do. Each one of them, we can have firefighters go and, you know, respond to that location once we start clocking, see what we end up with, that's really the most important thing, but it's common sense to know the farther you have to hide from this area of town, or.
Yeah.
Can track whatever location, location.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, Mr. Paul.
Main Street, middle of town, best.
Yep, and to be clear, Jerry, it's both lots, it's Dr., uh, uh.
Herfindal.
Herfindal, thank you, Joe, thank you, Councilman, it's Dr. Herfindal, and it's the old sacred bowl.
Oh.
Okay?
It's, it's, it's up to three.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's large, so there's plenty of parking for, uh, guys pulling in off of Fourth Street in big rigs, you know, and, you know, to get, you know, in their big pickups to get out, you know, go in there, it's not like where they are now, where they're so cramped. And it's also available for a pull-through, so that's, you know.
Nice.
Yeah, that's awesome.
You better have a larger lot, this folks.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just wanted to bring that up, and like I say, just keep that in your, in your mind, and, uh, I think we need to set, you know, do a workshop or something at some point, too. And I said, I have some contacts with Altrans that I can try to work on, and see if it's beneficial to say, hey, we have this plan, you know, maybe something happens, what would it take for us to get approval prior to, and, if that happens, but I think that in combination with. Mr. Hodgson's suggestions that they can help us with some of these things, and he, you know, they're sitting on something, it's not getting any money.
Right.
You know, the time is right, and, um, that's just one, but I think we look at it equally importantly inside, you know, what our, what our choices are, and hopefully by the time we get that nailed down, we have the, the planning ramp comes through for us, but we'll see what happens.
Yeah, or fingers crossed.
Yeah. You got any questions?
It's exciting.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. We'll go on to councilmen's reports, so, you, Joe?
Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, I, uh, a- as you know, I still sit on the Sacramento Valley Division, I call it the Northern California Division, uh, Board of Directors of the League of California Cities, Cal Cities. Uh, and we had our most recent meeting, um, was, um, last Monday, and, uh, it was, it was good discussion, I think we, um, I invite all of you to attend, um. As you know, there are quarterly membership meetings, this will be the last Zoom, you know, where we can all call in, uh, and. There's some interesting topics, I think you'll find, uh, the City of Anderson is hosting it, so we were supposed to be there, the last one was supposed to be the City of Redding, of course, that was also a Zoom, so, uh, on July thirtieth. And I'll get you all the information, if you don't get it from Charles Anderson, our district, um, manager, if you will, but I think there's going to be some good discussions, um, council member norms, um, they're talking about, um, homeless issues, of course, and home, home. Ability, um, places to live.
Affordability.
Affordability, grants, things like that, so it should be interesting, I'll get the agenda to you as soon as I get it, uh, from Charles, he's on vacation, I believe, this week in Yosemite with his kids, uh, but anyway, that's going to be. The end of this month, and they're only quarterly, and this is the last Zoom one, so, um, they usually try to keep it to an hour.
Okay.
Um, it's hard when it's the, when it's the quarterly meeting, but they do try to keep to an hour, hour and a half max, so it would be a good opportunity, I think, for people to. Also, I attended the, uh, League of California Cities, Cal Cities State Board Meeting, and, as you know, there's over fifty members on that board, huge, huge board meeting, um, somebody said, when you go, you know, uh. See the sites or something, and I, and I sho- I sent him a picture of what my sites were, a great big room with, uh, you know, great big thing where everything was broadcasted on, and my name was in it, so. It was, it was really good, it was an excellent meeting, some really difficult, um, challenging discussions on governance, and the change in representation, uh, to make sure that, uh, our representation statewide is diverse. Uh, and so, I was really, really proud that we had that many people in one room, and of course, as you know, not everyone agrees, but it was conducted with civility, with respect for one another.
My chief, thank you.
And I was, it just made me proud to be a member of that board, where we could discuss things that not everybody agreed on, and yet do it with civility, and, and honoring one another, and respect. Um, it was, I thought it was really good, and I did get some documentation that I can, uh, forward to all of you, and I'll be giving a little bit more of a report tomorrow night at the Lola meeting, and I wanna encourage everyone to go, it's in Dunsmere. Uh, down at Pops, down by the river on Sacramento Avenue, I believe, and so I am planning on going down there, but those are the two, the two main things that I've done, um, except for coming to welcome Randy. Before I left to go to the meeting, and so glad you're here, Randy. Thank you.
This is where you say, I am too.
He's really not sure.
Even I try and be funny, and a lot of things, trying to, learning, finally at this age, sometimes you just shut up.
And say.
Just easier. You get in trouble, huh?
Anyway, it's been, it's been a busy week, but I'll get you more information on it.
Good, thank you, thank you, thank you, Mr. McCoy?
Uh, yeah, I do, uh, uh, our chief is gone, but I do want to, um, thank our local law enforcement, and I wanna go on record as, as distancing myself, uh, from believing that our local law enforcement are murderers. I do not, I do not believe that, which is what's on Facebook.
Oh, no.
I won't bring up names of anybody that's posting it, but I, I do not believe that, I believe that, and I have observed, because I go past the courthouse probably three or four times a day, and in the evening, you're there all, you're sitting there all night. Um, our police force is just trying to keep the MONG safe here in town, and they're trying to help them, uh, you know, to, to. Just to keep them safe, so, I, I wanna go on record as saying that I, I, I don't think any of our local law enforcement are murderers, um, that really disturbs me, when we have citizens that are saying that.
Oh, yeah.
Um, I, I look forward to going to Lola tomorrow night, uh, at the, I guess, it's the theater down there, so.
It's, uh, it's, uh, uh, kind of a concert center.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Looks like you'll, yeah.
It's down on, Randy knows.
It's all converted bar.
Okay.
It's a bar.
Wooden building, and they have stuff in the back.
Isn't that the one that used to be the recording studio, though?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
So it's right next to the whole place, it's, it's the outside.
Yeah.
You'll be going, right, sir?
Yes, all good.
Dwayne's gonna say something about it, but I wanted to remind everybody that's listening, that we have a, an eight to twelve, or eight to one, uh, work party at the homeless site at the campground on Saturday. Um, we already have, uh, I know Beacon of Hope is pitching in to send people there, so, we hope, uh, maybe all the count, all the.
This Saturday?
This time. Eight to twelve, eight to one.
Yeah.
Hope you can be there, um, we're asking, we're asking you to bring rakes, loppers, chainsaw, if you can operate it.
I'm dangerous with the chains.
Weed backer, gloves, wheelbarrows, anything like that, um, it's gonna be mostly light duty things there, so.
This time, we'll keep it light, we'll keep the weapon off of it, for now, till we get the, go ahead to scrape it, so.
Yeah.
At least we can get a better, uh, vision by, uh, opening it up and cleaning it up.
So, yeah, so that's gonna be, I think it'll be a lot of fun.
Yeah.
Um.
Cory and I have been there, we could go.
I, I think, I'm gonna ask, uh, Mr. Mayor, for you to schedule, maybe, maybe cancel whatever we have coming up on workshops, and schedule a workshop on water, I think maybe that's the most important thing we need to do right now.
Water as in?
Well, the water as in, our, our compact with Don, where Don is saying, we're just about there, and with what, um, and getting information from Tony, you know, in TSO, so, I think we should have a, some kind of, uh.
Don's still on the line.
He's still there.
He's well.
I'd like, I mean, I think that's probably the most, uh, pressing thing right now.
Water.
Because obviously, I don't think we're, we're understanding, I mean, I'm, I'm, I, I understand less, after we talked about this on here before, I thought we were kinda fight, you know, kinda pushing and fighting for things, but it sounds like, no, we're basically done, once the H.
Oh, no.
Once each, well, that's, that's what Don will do, so.
That will never be done.
Yeah, so.
So, yeah, I will, I'm not gonna set a date right now.
No, 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 I'm just asking.
Then I wanna converse with Don, and, yeah, obviously, Randy.
But I think it should go to the front, in my opinion, it should go to the front, since we have so many questions on what.
Yeah.
Tony was saying.
Yeah, I think it's something we need to address as soon as possible.
Yeah, and, 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 and put other things on the back burner, um. Let's see, I'm trying to think, um, I do notice that for the most part, people are, um, people are stopping for the bike for the new, uh, um, lights.
That's true.
But, but, you know, the thing is, but, just like putting a signal in there, or putting lights in anywhere, doesn't mean they're gonna stop for it, they get used to it, and I see people blow through now, I've seen it more than, I saw it twice, I've seen it again, they just blow right through with somebody in the, you know, so.
But at least we tried, we're.
We, we did what we could, yeah, we did what we could, so.
We did.
They need to have like a press, like here, 'cause all it is is there, and a lot of, I've seen people kinda look at it, 'cause it doesn't really.
Yeah, I know, but I don't think.
Most places have like a arrow, you know, and then one doesn't, so.
So I don't know, I'm sorry to interrupt you, Paul, but did, did you by any chance talk to, uh, to Bill Choi, Marka?
No, about what?
About the, the, the sign, signal there, that he's, that he's referring to.
No, I need to do that, Bill Choi.
I think that's, that's going back to public awareness.
I, I need to get his phone number, and I'll give him a call, I'll call him tomorrow.
That'd be great, yeah, get that out in the newspaper, social media.
I know I wanted to talk to him about that swim program, too.
Yes, yes, thanks, sorry.
No, no, that's okay, um, I would like, I, I may be the only one on council, but I'd sure like to ask that, uh, we perk up these dead parks, like Greenhorn Park, it's a dead, it's dead, the grass is dead, and.
That's, that's something.
In upper, yeah, so, and I may be the only one, but I'm gonna throw it out there anyway.
No, I would, I'd like to listen to the council on this one, and, and this would be a request on, on my part, too, then, and I'd like to hear if the council has the same request, that Matt Gray give us a report on that, on the next city council meeting, because. Upper Green Horn Park is drying up, it's, it's really horrible right now, and I know we're, you know, we haven't entered any water restrictions yet from California.
That governor, the governor asked us, uh, everyone to cut back fifteen percent, it, it was a request, it's not an order.
Exactly, exactly.
Fifteen percent.
By now, upper, upper Green Horn Park.
It had been going dead long before the, the governor asked for fifty percent cut.
So, would you, with, uh, the permission of the council for that to be.
Okay, so ask him to make a report.
Can, can you direct the city manager to?
Well, the mayor can subdirect.
Can you, can you, can you, well, not without.
We're.
We don't, we don't, we don't work with just one person.
We're just red direction to give Matt, have Matt give us a report, so that's going to you, have Matt give us a report on why it's getting so extreme at Green Horn Park on our watering conditions. Okay.
Yeah. Perfect. So, um, I just had a couple other, do we know where we are with creek maintenance on the creek across from Gold Street School, I noticed that it's, looks like quite a bit of a fire hazard, it's probably about this tall, I, I know that we were working on a twelve hundred. Uh, do we have our twelve hundred permit yet, from?
I thought it was the sixteen.
Sixteen hundred.
Sixteen hundred, yeah, it was sixteen hundred, then they needed another one, but, so I don't, we don't have Matt or Cindy or anybody here to address that, um, it would be nice to have somebody to address that for us. Um, where are we, since we have Don on the line, we're already with the shopping cart ordinance.
That was supposed to come up on, and he did send stuff around on that, and he did send me some stuff.
Okay.
Um, that will be, would we decide August?
Okay, great.
That was coming up in August, August third, or is that what you decided on?
Okay.
Yes, sir.
No, absolutely, listen to them, and then I'll bring them back, I just need direction on that.
Yeah.
Shopping cart ordinance has been drafted by city attorney, and we're scheduling it.
Okay. Well, I know, but we've been scheduling it for.
Yeah.
About seven months, eight months now, so.
So, this week, we're on.
Yeah.
And then, um, sixteen hundred permit, I saw something on that today, and I, I apologize, I don't really know what it is, and so, it's, I'm all.
It's a maintenance permit.
That's okay, but it's been about, that, again, it's been three years, so.
It's nice, it's, it's worked on, and Matt had locked it for.
Yeah.
He's just something on that right away, probably in the form of an email to all of us, we just have the information.
Okay, yeah, that'd be nice, yeah, 'cause it's been three years now, hasn't it, that we haven't had it, we've been out of compliance, so.
Yeah, so that's August, it's gonna come back in August.
And shopping.
Shopping.
It's, it's done.
Everything else I have is personnel for.
I just didn't have it.
Everything else.
Okay, August.
Thank you.
The personnel.
Awesome, yeah, everything else I have is in possession.
Okay. August third.
Awesome, thank you. Okay, uh, Mr. Milton?
Uh, my turn. Uh. Yeah, I did receive, Councilman McCoy, I did receive survey from Don, the shopping cart ordinance, 'cause I have never seen, uh, I asked, 'cause I've never had a scene of any type of draft, since I've taken my seat, so he did send that to me, so he is working on it. As, uh, Randy said, so, I have not reviewed it yet, but he did send it to me, 'cause I haven't seen anything as a new council member regarding any drafts, so he sent it to me to review, so, I will be reviewing that, um, what's up? Has anybody been by the skateboard park?
I went by yesterday, it looks nice, they're working, working on it.
Yeah, they redid the surface, and, um, today I saw they delivered the, uh.
The ramp.
Half pipe around.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you, Cory, it's looking really good.
Thank you.
From these pictures that Matt sent me the other day, to what it looks like today, it's ninety.
Oh, sweet.
They did the pavement, that I took the blackberry bushes out of the fence, so it's not all overgrown, they've done a lot, it's so much better.
Oh, good.
So our youth, kids that use a skateboard, that are skateboarders will hopefully be appreciative and enjoy that, so I'm very happy that. In such a short, fast time, that, since I took my seat to, you know, put that going, that it's going to be done and they can. Use that until we do something long term, but that's.
Thank you, Cory.
Okay, so everybody got the letter I sent out regarding the flood hazard reduction project, I'm sure. I forward that on. I really do think that, uh, our partner in this project needs to be brought up to date and open discussion. So I would like to suggest that we have a workshop the end of August, maybe. If the rest of the council is in agreement, they've been very patient, waiting for an answer, any answer, and I think it would be, uh. Be who was all. Well, we're crowding the homeless thing. Do you wanna double up on the homeless or do you want a different night or?
Different night, um, we never know which way.
What do we already have planned for our workshop for, for, is that for August, you're saying?
Yeah, I was thinking August.
What do we have for August already?
The fifth and the nineteenth is scheduled homeless. The tourism is on the twenty fifth. And I think that's it. I don't think we can keep bumping the tourism because they won't be able to do the holiday events. Someone that twenty second, twenty fifth, at six thirty is what I have. Is that correct, Arthur?
Oh yeah, I've got it. Okay, that's for it.
On the first of September.
I'm good with that.
That's what we usually do, the workshops is Wednesday.
Is that all right with everybody?
Okay, I hate to tell you this, but.
What?
There's a rotary event scheduled at six o'clock on Wednesday.
Really?
They're trying something new to get new members. Six o'clock, I'm sorry. Maybe the second.
Actually, the second, does the second work for everybody?
That'd be a homeless.
One homeless meeting for a tourism meeting. We're doing a lot of homeless meetings.
Well, we're, we're doing it because we, we, yeah, we were moving, Dwayne and I were moving forward and we were meeting that much. We're meeting actually four times a month and we weren't moving forward and we, and then when we brought the council in.
Well, this is in September though.
Moving slower. Well, we hope to be moved in by December to homeless, November, December. I mean, according to what Matt shared with us, that's the first any of us heard it at that last meeting.
Okay, the ninth, September ninth.
What about the eighth?
I'm okay with the eighth.
I'm fine with that.
September eight.
Okay, got it, Arthur? Six, for the, uh, FHR project. And if I may, uh, contact Jerry and let him know, cause FHR, yeah, what is that? Flood hazard, uh, right.
Reduction Act. Can't keep that one off either.
No, we have time constraints on that and I don't know if we're in violation and that's a concern.
Oh, yeah.
Money and projects to be bought, um, yeah, properties to be, to be bought, um. Have we heard anything from Avery, sir? Regarding an update on where they are in the process?
That's close.
Oh, never mind. Yes, okay, so, uh, next Tuesday I have a C two C meeting. It is in Tulley Lake. If anybody's interested in going to the Collier meeting with me. And speaking of the Lola meeting tomorrow night, do we need to carpool?
Anybody going early? They're starting their events at three.
Well, they're doing some tours.
I'm not going at three, but I'm gonna try to be there by.
Uh, I don't wanna even be there by four.
And happy hour at five or?
Probably, well, it's probably five is.
So if you wanna be happy, get there at five.
So, you'll be static.
I wanted to go to that train museum part. Um, I thought it would be interesting.
Okay, the, uh, food, the people just after the food. No, actually, we all learn a whole lot when we go to these. We find out about what other cities or communities. And cities are doing as far as grants where they are in development, uh, if they know of any resources that other communities can use. If there, if they have any vacancies and they need help with filling positions. It's a great resource and information exchange, um, night, we just happen to eat there. But the whole night is spent with conversation and presentations from each of the cities. So it's a real good update.
That's where we, that's where we got information about Randy.
Now I know who to blame.
Yes.
You know who to blame.
You can blame Bruce.
So we can discuss this. So, uh, I'll, uh, I'm not gonna keep it simple. Uh, Paul and I did go out to our proposed, uh. Covid campsite next to the Beacon of Hope off against foothill. We surveyed it basically, we've got measurements of the whole property. Basically did, worked up a clock plan, which I'm hoping to have for you, uh, tomorrow night's meeting. I'm, I'm working on it.
Thursday night, Thursday night?
But I'll have that, I'm hoping to have that for Thursday night, a plot plan. So if you guys are interested on the way to layout, this is just our, our. Interpretation of what it looks like. We obviously want input, how functionality of it. Just going off of what we've seen and seen in the other areas and how it's gonna flow properly. And actually, we mapped out, uh, this, I don't think I even told you this, that mapped out upwards of, actually, we'll be able to do about thirty campsites. Yeah, it will, after mapping it out, putting all that on, on paper, it actually was amazing. It's small, small looking areas, but actually with you spacing out, this is giving each individual around twelve feet. Eight foot for their, for their tent area, but twelve foot around them. So they have another four foot around them on top of that. And that's, that's actually being conservative. So we could actually do more to Beacon of Hope works with this. They can do some too. So, um, it was actually enlightening. Um, nice to see that we have good shade trees for them there and stuff too. And, uh, be able to place things at proper place for tourists, makes it convenient for them to, and for services that are gonna go there.
I was gonna say on the services, like the, um, the porta potties and the wash stations.
And Mr. Mayor, there will be two homeless. I know that that's something that's been asked and not all homeless want to come to our meetings. But there will be two homeless, a couple that will be here, uh, tomorrow night, or Thursday night. Um, they don't, not, they don't necessarily wanna be recognized, hey, you're homeless, you know, along with another man who was homeless in Marysville for. A year and a half, about ten years ago, lived out and lived out of his car and then in the mission. And, um, and so, um, we'll have some other people here.
Yeah, and just keep in mind too, uh, plan on doing, uh, a little lunch in two. Remember, we worked out the details on that, but we'll, we definitely will have, uh, food there, food, water, so.
Yeah, on Saturday.
Yeah, on Saturday, yes. And then Saturday, yeah, we'll have food on there and, uh, that's what I'm stuck there for too.
I am sorry, I will not be able to help Saturday with the.
You have a wedding.
Helping decorate and do all that.
All righty, well then we will hit this and go into closed session.